Good morning, on behalf of the county commissioners and the staff of the county. It is my privilege to welcome you for being present today. I call this meeting to order. I declare that there are seven of the commissioners present and two not. And I'll ask the manager to explain why those two are not here, please.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Owens, Dr. Sherman Owens. Actually Commissioner Jim McGarris is with us via teleconference. Mr. McGarris, would you like to announce your presence?
Yes, good morning. I want to thank Mike for hooking me up to be able to serve this morning. And thank you to my fellow commissioners for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I appreciate it very much.
And I guess just for the audience's knowledge, Mr. McGarris has had surgery and is just out temporarily until he gets back. Chairman McLawhorn is out this morning with an illness and could not make the meeting, so our Chairman Owens is chairing the meeting.
God be with you, Jimmy.
Great, thank you, Mark.
All right, this time let's all stand and our indication will be by Charles and our pledge by Tom.
Almighty and merciful Father, we humbly beseech Thee to watch over us as we do the people's business this morning. Please guide us with Your invisible hands so we may find Your favor in the decisions that we reach. Please bless us with Your grace through Jesus Christ, our only mediator and advocate. Amen.
Amen.
Please all remain standing so that we may support the greatest country in the world.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unless there are some additions to the agenda or changes, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand.
Aye.
Mr. Manager, I believe I do not have anyone desiring to address the board. Is that correct?
That is correct, unless there's somebody in the audience who did not sign up.
All right. We now will move on to items for report. Dr. Lenka.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to be here today. Chairman Owens, appreciate you having us today. County Commissioners, also Mr. Elliott. I would like to take just a minute before we get started to introduce some people we have with us here today. We have with us right behind me, we have our Chair, the Board of Education. We have Caroline Doherty. We also have three Board members with us, Betsy Flanagan, Anna Barrett Smith, and Robert Moore. We also have a couple principals, Allison Covington and Marty Baker. We have our CTE Director in the back, Beth Ann Trueblood. We have the senior leadership who decided to skip to the other side of the room today. We'll bring them up as needed for the presentation. So we also have with us a little something different. We have some students with us today and they're going to talk a little bit about what's going on in their lives at some of our schools. We'll share some of those things as well. I like the whole new setup, a little bit easier to read this. Just for your, just so you can kind of see where we're at, just a quick snapshot. You can see the number of schools, that hasn't changed really since our last, last time I was here. You can see our previous lunch, or poverty rate, or demographics, or budget. If you add all those budget lines up, you get about $260 million. Our average daily membership, you can see kind of on a, for the most part, a solid trend for the last 10 or 12 years, 12, 13 years. You look in 2010, you can see a pretty decent drop there. That was actually the year that we changed the kindergarten starting age for our students. So that's, that took a hit that year. And then in 2016, you saw we took a drop. That was the opening of our charter schools in 2016 and 2017. Now in 2018, you can see we're coming back up this year even though the charter schools are expanding. In addition to the lab school, which technically by all rights is considered a charter school, but we consider the lab school with DCU as part of a partnership with Pitt County Schools. And I'll talk about that throughout the presentation. Just some base, these are the basic revenues. It says 226 million. The other number I referenced included child nutrition and our capital outlay. So you can see where most of our money comes from, state, local, and federal. The special revenue you see there of 16 million, that's part of the $16 million federal teacher incentive fund grant we received a little over a year ago. So you can see that money's in our revenue account as well. Just some snapshots, you saw we had over 23,000 students, over 3,300 employees, 2,100 certified staff, which are teachers and principals. We have 65 lateral entry teachers, which are your non-traditional, well those becoming more and more traditional, but that's your non-traditional students who may have had a career somewhere else and then are coming back into teaching, coming back to teaching. We also have 19 international teachers from around the world. And we have percentage wise, one of the highest, if not the highest, in the state of 250 nationally board certified teachers. We're actually leading the east in that regard for sure. Then our 1,200 classified staff, and those are, you know, kind of the backbone of what things get done with our cafeteria and our custodial services and our bus drivers and our clerical help and our maintenance department. So those individuals are huge for making the school system operate effectively. Graduation rate, we're going to start with this because this is something we're proud of. You can see where we were six years ago in 11, 12. Steady increase, the state has had a steady increase. Obviously Pitt County Schools going back to before my time made graduation rate a conscious effort of something to improve on and focus on. We put things in place. The Board has put in graduation coaches prior to me coming and we still have those in place. You can see what's happening with that. At, you know, about four years ago, we were, I don't know, it looks like about five or six points below the state average. Now we're about three tenths. Our graduation rate was 86.2 percent and you can see the state was 86.5. So we're closing that gap, we're getting our kids to graduate. That was you, Mr. Farley. Just some good things we have going on in our school system. The early college, high school just was the nominated as a distinguished Title I school, which is the only high school ever to have been nominated for that. It made the finals, the final four, so we're very proud of that school. It also was the only A. You're not going to hear me talk a lot about the AF system because I'm not sure it's the most, in fact, I know it's not the best way to evaluate a school. But it was the only A in the state that had over 80% free reduced lunch in, of its students. So it was the only A. So we're very proud of what Win Widdenhen, the principal, and the students at that school are doing. Plus continued success of all of our employees. Heather Landreth is a teacher at WH Robinson. This is the second time she's been a finalist for the elementary math teacher of the year for the state. We've actually had the North Carolina Media Administrator of the Year, three consecutive years. You see a picture there, the lady in the picture is Allison Setzer. She is the principal at Bundy Sugg. She is also the Principal of the Year for Pitt County Schools. She's also the North Carolina Administrator of the Year. Last year, you're aware Charlie Epps, Charlie Langley at Epps was the Media Coordinator of the Year, Media Administrator of the Year for the state. Just some things that don't always get the headlines. Our teachers have gone out and have written over $200,000 worth of grants for their classrooms or their libraries. This is just in the last year. So and this, you know, going forward, we got more coming down the pipe. But our teachers go out of the way to get things for their classroom and their students. Then of course, the federal grant, we shared that a while back. But all told, that grant is about $22 million between the state and the federal. So we're getting opportunities for our teachers and the goal of that is actually, Teacher Incentive Fund or the TCM in there talks about the teacher compensation model. We're looking at different ways to pay teachers and what ways to keep teachers in the classrooms. You know, the General Assembly's always been talking about what can we do to get away from the traditional teacher salary model? So we've put in some places, some things where we can actually pay teachers extra funds for doing different things, for being certain leaders within the school. So we're extremely excited about that. This is, we had a planning year, now we're in the first year, first real years. We've been doing this for a couple months and like everything else, when you're doing something that's never been done, you've got to grow with it. So we're growing with it. And just to show that we're actually doing things right, the GFO, which is the Government Financial Office of Reporting, has given our financial office and Deborah Baggett the excellence in financial reporting for the, how many years in a row? About 13 years in a row. So not only are we getting lots of money, but we're doing the right stuff with it according to the stated auditors. They come in and look at all those things, making sure we're spending it appropriately. There's our appropriations over the last about eight years. You can see we're right now about $38 million locally, plus a million dollars in our capital fund. You increased that from 750,000 two years ago. We certainly appreciate that support for our capital needs. Pitt County Schools is the light green line. You can see the red line is the state average. Everybody's kind of on an upward tick there. You can kind of see everyone's going up. The state average has gone up a little bit quicker than us. We hope to continue that trend of closing the gap on that, on the state average in financial, but continue that upward swing. Again, some good news, we've already shared a lot of this. The graduation rate is at its all-time high. The graduating class last year recorded over $26.5 million in scholarship opportunities, which was the highest. The previous year was 25 million and some change. That was the previous highest. So we're doing some great things for our students. The grade level proficiency rate continues to increase. Just sharing some good news in our CTE department, some neat things happening here. You saw we had 23,000 students in Pitt County Schools, but over half of them, 12,500, are actually enrolled in some sort of CTE class. CTE, and most of those wound up becoming CTE completers. So they're actually enrolled in those classes. And that includes middle school and high school kids. So all of our students are involved in those programs. Last year, credentials earned by Pitt County School students was over 2,700, which was top 10 in North Carolina. Keep in mind, we're only 14th biggest, I think it was actually closer, number six, if I remember correctly. Number six. We were sixth in the state even though we're only about the 14th largest school district. DH Conley has the largest FBLA chapter in the state of North Carolina. My daughter's in that program, excellent program. The Community College Articulation Credits, you can see we've got almost 2,500 articulation credits earned. Several years ago, we started with a grant from the Golden Leaf Foundation. You remember, we had a nice presentation right here, about $1.2 million that put STEM Labs in all of our middle schools. Well, we've taken that to a whole new level over the last couple of years with the help of Beth Ann Trueblood, our CTE Director. We have now added these STEM Labs that are high schools. I think we now have them in five high schools. One more coming on next year or later this year, the five high schools. We've added engineering STEM Labs. DH Conley is going to actually add the first health science STEM Lab into Pitt County. We've also expanded our welding labs. If you haven't seen, what started at Aiden Grifton years ago has now been expanded to Farmville Central High School. I've been in the classroom since school opened. Awesome what these students have the opportunity to do. Things that most students will never have that opportunity to do. And it's not only that, it's a career. These students can get careers. Plus our agriculture program has expanded. When I first came here, we had one program and two half programs. Now we have three full programs and part of one more. So we've expanded those programs into the, and you know, people talk about agriculture, but if you truly dig down into agriculture, it's truly a STEM program. Truly a STEM. If you look at what's happening in these classrooms and what these students have the opportunity to learn. In fact, we're going to hear a little bit about the North Pitt High School FFA, the Living to Serve Grant. We'll let the student talk a little bit about that and share some things. And just what makes the CTE program as great as it is is simply because if you look at the last line, the graduation rate of our CTE completers. So these are the high school students who could go through and have a four-course concentration in the CTE class, graduate high school. And that's what we want. And you can see it, 99.1%. Let's find the one kid, but go from there, right? Yes, sir?
Dr. Licker, can you remind the Board what acronym CTE stands for?
Oh, my fault. We get a little, we have issues with some of these. We get, CT stands for Career Technical Education. That's more, that's, we'll let the students talk a little bit. We have three students from that world here today. Just some other things, note sharing. We do have two restart schools that we're working with now to get them kind of rebooted and get academic framework rewritten. The county growth, you've noticed that we've been looking at where the growth is in the county and what that means to us as a school system. If you look anywhere along Worthington Road, east and west, out near DH Conley and over towards south central, you see lots of potential houses coming that direction. So we're paying close attention to that and what does that mean for us? We're going to be doing some studying on that in the February or so to bring some information back. And we'll be sharing that information with the county commissioners as we move forward. Dress code, got a little bit of attention at the end of school last year. We have got that, a new process there. Diverse teaching staff, we've mentioned that. But also if you look at our budget, one thing people need to look at is $190 million out of our whole budget is salaries and benefits for our students. That's going, that's part of the Pitt County community. $190 million right back into Pitt County. And because we're lucky enough to have school systems with a lot of their employees living in Pitt County as well, you get their money as well. So we're excited to see that number, $190 million. So now we're going to talk a little bit, something different, okay? We're going to do something different this time. One of our focuses this year, at least for my focus, is what is a graduate? What does a portrait of a graduate look like? Well, what we're going to do is we're going to talk, let them talk to you about what's going on. This is where we're going to have some students share with you what's going on in their schools and what they look like. And these are going to be your future taxpayers of Pitt County, maybe voters of Pitt County. So, but these are the students who are going to be running Pitt County years down the road. So at this point, we'd like to bring up some of our students. We're going to go in order. Our agricultural science student from North Pitt High School. Are your eggs in North Pitt High School for the county commissioners? And you can have some too, of course.
Hello, my name is Kayla Meeks, I'm from North Pitt High School. I'm learning to be an animal scientist. I'm part, I've been taking agriculture basically for my, oh, whole high school career. I decided to learn this because I've always been interested in agriculture my whole life. My interest grew bigger when I hit high school and saw the things we did. And especially when we got the chickens, that was fun. I've taken agriculture class all four years. I've taken agri-science, Amechanics 1, Amechanics 2, and I'm currently taking animal science. And with Pitt County known for its agriculture, it's really helped me seeing, talking to the farmers about the fields and all the fields we got going on. I hope to see agriculture growing and keep alive in the future of students in Pitt County. One day I will graduate and be a citizen of Pitt County. I will vote and pay taxes. Thank you for working and make this a nice place to live.
Thanks, sir.
Next, we're here from a welding student from Aiden Grifton High School.
Hello, morning.
Morning.
My name is Harrison Paramore and I'm from Aiden Grifton High School. And I'm learning to be a welder. And, you know, I'm learning this because I've discovered, you know, taking the classes that I'm actually pretty good at. And welders are in constant need across the country. And if you're a welder, you're probably never going to go without a job because they're always available no matter where you are. And not many people know how to do it or even what it is really. And, you know, taking the classes in high school, they count as a college credit as you're in high school. So, you know, I'm already ahead of everybody else that's just starting to go to college and, you know, I'm only in high school. So you know, that's a pretty good thing.
Put your mic up, son, so that somebody on the mic can hear you.
Sorry. Yeah, and I plan on doing that basically in my life, you know. I'm a welder, be good at it, make some money, you know, become a citizen, vote, pay taxes, and do all that good stuff. And I would like to thank y'all for making, you know, it possible for me to learn at high school because, you know, most high schools don't even have that kind of stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're here from a health science student from DH Conley.
Hello, I'm sorry, I don't have any eggs for you guys, but my name is Kennedy Davis and I go to DH Conley. I'm learning to be a physician or physician's assistant and I'm learning this through the health science program that we provide through high school. And it provides so many great opportunities for me to be able to, you know, further myself and learn more because a lot of people don't know all the things that the health career have. You know, you only think of doctors and nurses, but there's so many more things out there. And this has even led me to, you know, get an internship and learn a little bit more before I even leave high school. That's something that a lot of people don't know. And they go to college and pay just to, you know, find out if they can handle the health career. But I appreciate this program because it's allowed me to really discover what I really love doing, which is helping and providing for other people. And one day I will graduate and I will become a member of Pitt County. And I will be contributing to society as well as paying taxes. And I want to thank you guys for that opportunity, even for providing me that opportunity. And thank you for making this a wonderful place to live.
Thank you.
Next, we have an art student from Walcoats Elementary.
Good morning, hello. My name is Wada Lupo Washington from Walcoats Elementary School of the Arts and I'm in fifth grade. I'm learning to be a great artist and soon to be a violinist. I decided to learn this because I have such great teachers and parents and they have instilled in me a love for the arts that has grown deeply in my heart. One day I will be a graduate and be a citizen of Pitt County and will vote and pay taxes. Thank you for working to make Pitt County a nice place to live. I would like to present each one of you a Halloween art print from Southern Bar students. I hope that you enjoy them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I must say Superintendent Licker has really programmed him about voting and paying taxes. And the teachers are really mocking.
No idea what you're talking about, Ms. Williams, no idea.
We're not quite at budget time.
The teacher is glad to get it before budget time.
And last, one of the first themed schools we put in Pitt County Schools several years ago was our Dos Mundo's program at Belvoir Elementary. And I'll explain that a little bit, a little bit more in the program. But first, we have a dual-language student from Belvoir.
But can we get a mic or something?
She wants me to stand with her.
Come on.
This is Kamaya Sutton. She was in our first cohort of Dos Mundo's, so she's been in the program since kindergarten. And she is now a second grade student. So one of the goals of the dual-language program is not only to be bilingual and be able to speak Spanish, but also be bilingual, so she can read and write Spanish as well.
Wait a minute, dear. We have a solution.
They heard us in the back.
Hello, my name is Kamaya Sutton and I'm from Belvoir Elementary School. I'm learning to be a bilingual student. I decided to participate in Dos Mundo's because I can learn how, I can learn to have a conversation with other people who speak a different language. Being bilingual helps me translate English to Spanish and Spanish to English. Being bilingual is awesome. One day I will graduate and be a productive citizen of Pitt County. I will vote and pay taxes. Thank you for working to make this a nice place to live.
We want a teacher to let her know that we were not laughing at her.
I'd like to thank all of our students for their help and what you see is wide range of things happening in Pitt County Schools. Just all sorts of opportunities, which is, you know, one of the things I preach is just make sure that when the students graduate, they're ready for their future. Not my future, my future hopefully is here, okay? But it's ready for their future, whatever that happens to be, whether that's going to be a welder, going to work in the agricultural world, medical field, going to be an artist, going to be bilingual so they have more opportunities than most of us put together then. I lost my clicker. Oh, thank you. So, and again, just a big thanks to all of our students for coming out and missing a little bit of class. Appreciate that. Our thematic units, you know, we mentioned that earlier. This is just a quick list. We have, we're going to go through some of these real quickly. Some of these you've already seen and heard before, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them, but I will update you a little bit. You can see that the South Greenville toward the bottom is a fast-forward lab school. We'll talk a little bit more about that one. The other opportunities there are ones I think I've already shared in the past, but what we will say is these are things that were kind of a dream a year and a half ago. This year, they're being implemented. Okay, so it's no longer just being talked about. These are things we're doing. Two years ago when I presented this, started this conversation, last year when I presented, these are things we're hoping to do this year. Well, now we're doing them. You already heard about this program from our lovely young lady. This is in the third year. That program will continue through the, through fifth grade and eventually we'll continue that program at Welcome Middle School. Global Health and Wellness at Elmhurst, if you look at the very bottom left-hand picture, that is the new gymnasium that we just built. Actually, the ribbon cutting is today. Hopefully someone's coming, you were invited, I believe. Hopefully someone's coming, you were invited, I believe. Um, but you can see the different things happening at that school. Avid at Sam Bundy. Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. And that's really about putting the careers and what it takes to get to those careers in front of the students. You can look there, it, uh, talks about the career spotlights. If this is what you want to do, what do you need to be working on now? In the bottom two pictures, left and right, one of the things we do at that school with that program is we have what we call student-led conferences. Now, I've been doing student-led conferences for 20 years since I was a assistant principal going back to Jacksonville and Onslow County. Okay, but we're seeing it here at another level where these students are talking to their parents about what they're doing in school. Huge stuff. The Arts at Walcoats. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner, young lady who designed the, uh, the back of the recycling truck. You can see the ECU coming over and working with our, our programs. We'll talk about some of our partnerships here in the near few, in a little, couple more slides. STEM at Eastern, what we've done here is we've created a whole STEM class where these students get an extra insight into STEM. If you go over there and look at that program, we have these science kits that we can replace and replenish and things, but these students have the opportunity to go in there at all levels and do different science experiments, as you can see, based on whatever grade they're in, on based on their curriculum. STEM at Welcome Middle. We're still continuing with our STEM process at Welcome Middle. We now have three STEM labs at Welcome Middle. The last two were actually part of our LOBS One Grant, we'll talk about that later. But you can see the students involved there. And that doesn't happen in every school system, I can tell you. Then one of the greatest things we may have done in the last couple of years was the early college high school at PCC. You can see what's going on there, I mentioned that already. This is in its third year of the program. We have 224 kids, uh, 224 students. You can see what's going on there and they're obviously tagging along closely with PCC and what's going on in their science world as well. We always talk about, uh, STEM and you hear about it all the time. And one of the things that was always interesting when I came to Pitt County years ago, I always heard, "We don't have any STEM programs." Well, you know, that, that's really a misnomer because if you truly look at what STEM is, the science, technology, engineering, and math, we've been teaching all that stuff for years. We just didn't have it packaged in a way to sell it as such. But I also like to think of STEM as something just a little bit different. STEM is designed as something that, strategies that engage minds. It's a different way of thinking. It's a different way of having the students work through processes. And we now have robotics. I think our robotics team won the state, had two teams that were in the top part of the state, go to nationals, do extremely well at, at nationals, um, down in Houston last year. Coding and engineering, you see what our students are doing, they're coding programs, coding robots there. We also have expanded coding in our eighth grade to where all of our eighth-grade CTE classes are about coding classes, teaching students to code. If you look at the statistics just on, um, computer engineers and computer scientists, uh, they're like, we have 1,400 students getting ready to graduate college in science engineering, but there's like 25,000 jobs. So, this is an opportunity for us to get students involved in something that can, they can truly excel at. Just some more pictures of things going on in some of our schools. More pictures, um, uh, you see some welding. You know, people will say, "Welding is STEM?" Of course, huge part of STEM. These kids have to create things. These students are creating what's going on. Um, you see some students here, see the picture there at South Central, that's what we call a gallery walkthrough. Let me just take a second here. What happens in, in this process, not, not this student in this picture, but these students have to come up with a problem, solve the problem, figure out how they would fix the problem, and then market the problem. What we had at South Central last year was a student, a young lady, went through this process. She created some sort of, uh, thread seam ripper process. And ECU liked it so much, they've actually brought her over and are working with her and actually helping her get into patented and getting it on the market through the Innovation Center at, at ECU. Great relationships and partnerships. Um, just some new initiatives real quick. Um, did mention the ECU Lab School earlier, um, and that is truly a partnership. And again, this is not, it's only been, hasn't been done in years. One other school system in the state is doing it this year, but they copied everything we did. So, um, they're learning. They had, had the advantage of having all of us, working on all of our bumps first, but that's okay. But this is a real partnership. We're working together to help create new ways where we can teach these students and also help ECU create how they're going to teach their teachers to teach and their principals to be principals. And then the next thing that's going to be coming on the radar that'll be opening up in, uh, this fall, the fall of 2018, will be the ECU Innovative Early College High School. Um, can't, you can't, just can't brag enough about the relationships we have at ECU, at Pitt Community College, and everybody else in Pitt County. But these partnerships that we have giving us these opportunities is huge. This is just going to be another opportunity for our students. Mentioned South Greenville and there, there is a little more from the lab school, talked a little bit about that. Plus, we still have fast-forward going on. We had to actually suspend that this past year because of the work at the lab school. But next year, South Greenville will be one of those themed schools as well. And these are the partners that we deal with. I couldn't list them all, so I kind of tried to be general a little bit, but you can see the Chamber of Commerce, the Parents for Public Schools, United Way, PCC, ECU, the Boys and Girls Clubs are huge for us. Uh, the Early Literacy Coalition is something that I, I, we're working with as a school system to start getting books in the hands of, of birth to, birth to five-year-old students. I think you've seen that written up in our paper a couple of times, which is a great opportunity for our students, before they're even our students, to start reading. The municipalities in Pitt County, and I'm not going to name any because I'll leave somebody out, but they do a great job, okay? Whether that's financial supporting, whether that's partnerships, uh, whether that's SROs, wherever the case may be, all sorts of relationships with all of the different municipalities in Pitt County. Vidant, you know, the Health Science Academy that you heard about. We also have Project Search, which is an opportunity for our exceptional children to go work and get real hands-on experience. Plus, we have, um, interns at Vidant. Um, that whole intern program is really starting to grow as well. Uh, local businesses, they help us run our STEM camps and go on and on and on. Um, capital projects, just go through some of these. Remember, we started our LOBS program a couple of years ago. Uh, we're completing most of those now. Uh, there's a picture of Lake Forest. You can see the students are in there. We, uh, that, those students have been there since day one. That is complete. There's the CMFs, the underside of CMFs, the structural repair, you can see that is now complete as well. Elmhurst Gym, as I mentioned, is com- com- almost complete, a few punch items, but it's actually, we have the occupancy, so actually kids are in there playing. Uh, I was there the other day on Monday when it was the first day the students were there. So, we're there. Uh, ribbon cutting is today. Chicade Phase Two, there's some pictures of that, it's a fantastic gym in the media center. That gym, that, that building's moving along quickly. Uh, we're actually hopefully going to get some, maybe some opportunities to move around Christmas, uh, first part of January, several months ahead of schedule. The Belvoir Restoration, that was also part of that. Uh, work's going to start on that in January, it'll be done by the end of the school year. The new transportation complex, the new bus garage, transportation complex sounds really fancy, doesn't it? Um, that's going to be our new bus garage over on, um, off of Allen Road. Uh, that's, work should begin, uh, this month, I believe, this month. So, there's all of our projects, uh, from the LOBS One. We started that two years ago. You can see there, uh, about $20 million worth of projects, most of which are complete or will be complete this year. If you remember back when we started that, we also had some other opportunities that be pushed back to a LOBS Two or some other opportunities there. But these are some things that you see in front of you. It's about, uh, on the next slide as well, that we need to look at, the biggest of which is the A.G. Cox renovation of $7 million. I think we started that a couple of years ago, it was about $5 million. Everything has gone up immensely in the last, uh, last two to three years. There's the last part of that list. That's $16 million potential, um, projects there that we'll be discussing with you as we move forward. Oh, and that's the end of that, that part of the presentation, so, can I take some questions?
Dr. Linke, it's a fine presentation and I don't know of any way that you can, uh, illustrate better than bringing to people that's been affected by what you did today.
Yes, sir.
Quite, quite a show. Is there any questions or do we?
Yes, sir. On your LOBS One versus LOBS Two list, the, the first LOBS, LOBS being the limited obligation bond.
Right.
Borrowing. The first one, I think, was an 18 or 19 million dollar borrowing and then I think we had originally identified about $25 million that the county could, um, take debt out on using the dedicated quarticent sales tax. Your list on the LOBS Two seems to be substantially bigger than the balance of, like, 25?
We had to move lots of things, obviously, from the first, to the, when we put the first list together, we had to move lots of things to the second list, obviously. And then, uh, most of those prices have gone up immensely, as you can see there. Plus, we've added a couple of things that we're bringing to you to, to discuss.
So, I want to point out there's a difference there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Linke. Thank each of you that participated, particularly the young people, board members and professors and teachers and all.
All right. Thank you for your time, county commissioners, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, that ate into 15 minutes of precious time.
That was the first presentation that he seemed excited about. What is that? What's that paper?
Designing concepts for bridges over a mole. It's immovable, easy to place and don't get in the way of anything but supportive.
All right, good morning. It's good to see everybody here this morning. That's kind of a hard act to follow there. And I'm really sincerely apologize, I wasn't able to bring you a sample of our product.
Give it a Ben receptive.
Um, I'm here this morning to, to give you an overview of our sales from fiscal year 17, um, our profit distribution to the county, as well as fiscal year 17 highlights. And I'm also going to mention at the end, the first quarter fiscal, fiscal year highlights because I was able to get that, um, in before I came to give the presentation today. So, first, let's start off with the retail sales. Uh, retail sales for fiscal year 17 were $15,703,181 and it's increased over fiscal year 2016 of $768,647. Uh, mixed beverage sales, which is what we, um, give to the hotels and the bars and that's, that's what, um, comprises the mixed beverage sales. Uh, for fiscal year 2017, they were $3,216 and 300, $3,216,584, a $58,801 increase over fiscal year 2016. Um, here you can see our gross sales. The total sales for 2017 were a little, almost $19 million, which was $827,448 increase over 2016 and overall percentage change was a 4.6% change. Uh, profit distribution comparison from 2017 to 16, you can see here, the statutory profit distribution was $533,139 with additional distribution from our working capital of $766,861 for a total of $1.3 million. Total distributions to the county for fiscal year 17, our beverage price support, which is paid to the county commissioners on a monthly, um, basis, was $60,244.37, add to the profit distribution of 1.3 million for a total 1.360 for the fiscal year 2017. Financial highlights for fiscal year 17, our revenues increased by $827,448.12 over the prior year. Over 26% of profits were expended for law enforcement and alcohol education. Um, we give money for programs at ECU as well as Pitt County Schools and that's what the alcohol education funds are used for. Um, approximately 68% of our profits were given to the county in the profit distributions. Uh, since 1990, we have distributed over $25 million to the county. We purchased a 2016 Chevy Tahoe for our law enforcement officers at a total cost of approximately $35,000. We updated our credit card machines to EMV chip readers to protect our customers. Um, that cost us right at $29,000. Uh, insta- we installed integrated Intellicheck Age ID in the Greenville stores. And what that is, is we're catching people with fake IDs and that's been a big problem for us in the county. But, um, we've caught several people in the store since we've implemented this program. Inventory buying savings of $187,578. Um, that's basically how we make our extra profit. We're able to, to save money on buying in product, which in turn gives us more revenue. First quarter fiscal 18 highlights, our sales increased the first quarter over, uh, last, uh, fiscal year of $236,087. Uh, profits before distribution were $471,991 and the distribution to the county was $300,000. Beverage price support paid to the county was $5,410. And that's all I have for you this morning. If you would have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions? If not, we appreciate it. Just continue to, uh, increase the money.
We do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job by all of you. Okay, uh...
Good morning. I'm here this morning to, uh, sort of introduce a project we've been working on for quite some time that we're pretty excited about in our department. It's the Southwest Bypass Corridor Land Use Plan. Uh, we had hoped to get this project started about this time last year, but due to Hurricane Matthew, the, we had to sort of shift our resources to those recovery efforts and, uh, this project got delayed until this year. Uh, just to give you an up, give you an overview, the Bypass Corridor Land Use Plan, it's a cooperative effort between the county, uh, city of Greenville, Winterville, Aiden, the Greenville Urban Area NPO, and NC DOT. And it's been the county's highest transportation priority in the transportation improvement program for, for a long time. Uh, construction on the bypass began in September of last year and the expected completion date is June of 2020. Uh, just to give you an overview of the, the corridor itself, it begins, there's, it's about 12 and a half miles, uh, begins in Greenville at the, uh, current intersection for 264 bypass, uh, right at the overpass as you're coming into town. Uh, there'll be interchanges at the US 13 and Four Lines Road areas, um, and then down in Aiden is where it ends. It ends just south of Aiden, uh, with also interchanges there at 102 and, uh, the new interchange where it comes in and merges into 11. Uh, we did send out an RFP in July seeking a qual- a qualified consulting firm. Uh, we did select Stewart Inc. out of Raleigh as the consultant for the project. Uh, the process, it began last month in October and is expected to last approximately 10 to 12 months. Uh, total budget for the project is $47,500, which is partially being funded by NC DOT uh, for approximately $25,000 through the Greenville Urban Area NPO. Uh, and the remainder of the balance of that budget is, is included in the county funds. It's already been budgeted for this year. Uh, the contract for this project was executed, uh, in October 19th of this year. We do have some initial steps. First, we have to identify the key stakeholders within the corridor area. Uh, these are the major landowners, the business owners and public agencies. Uh, we'll be working on, on getting those groups together and interviewing them. Uh, also working on formulating a steering committee for the project to help guide the development of the plan. Uh, that's going to be composed of two staffs. There's a technical and staff group, which is, uh, the county staff and our, our municipal partners, the staff from their offices, as well as NC DOT and the NPO. Uh, and then we'll have a study oversight group, which is comprised mainly of planning board members and appointed officials. Uh, and, and as of right now, we do have two county officials that have already been appointed, two of our planning board members, uh, Ms. Fay Barefoot and, uh, Mr. Ricky Hines. Uh, these groups will meet jointly cer- uh, at certain times. We'll have approximately six meetings for the technical staff group throughout the process, uh, and probably three to four joint meetings where we'll bring the oversight group in, just to make sure we're, uh, following development of the plan and, and proceeding in the right direction. So, you see for the schedule on your screen there, uh, we did, we've already begun the pre-planning and working on our kickoff workshops and meetings, uh, this month. You know, we'll be looking at the stakeholder interviews sometime later this month. We're also going to be doing a community tour with Stewart and our partners, just to get a better feel for the corridor and, um, what kind of development will be appropriate in those areas. Uh, you'll also see at the bottom, we do have two community meetings that are, that are tentatively scheduled for around February and June. And our next steps so far are, again, the community engagement tour of the corridor area, we'll be looking at that probably the week of Thanksgiving, uh, early in that week. Also organizing those stakeholder interviews. Uh, Stewart's going to come down and just do a two-day hit. We'll have the tour and then the following day, we're looking at doing those interviews. I'm also looking to finalize the organization of those groups for our steering committee. Uh, still waiting on a couple of our partners to provide the names for, for those groups. I'm also looking to finalize the organization of those groups for our steering committee. I'm still waiting on a couple of our partners to provide the names for those groups, then get those steering committee meeting dates scheduled. And so we'll be continuing to bring periodic reports back to the board on the process of this plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Not, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Owens, just the next meeting dates for the next two meetings coming up will be November twentieth at six o'clock and December fourth at nine AM. That's all I have.
Do we have a motion to?
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor to consent agenda, raise your right hand.
Aye.
So order. All right, number nine.
You ready for me? Yes?
Please.
Good morning.
I thought you finished.
What do you think?
While we hear that, Mr. Webb will need to be excused at whatever time he feels is suitable for him, and it's so ordered, Mr. Webb.
Just for everyone's verification, I have a Superior Court trial starting this morning, so I have to be over at the courthouse shortly.
Thank you, Lee. Go ahead, then.
Good morning. Thank you for having me this morning. I come to you on behalf of the Animal Services Advisory Board with a proposed comprehensive animal control ordinance. Why do we need a comprehensive ordinance? One, it would be less confusing for citizens. One ordinance is very much easier to understand and locate versus four standalone ordinances. Right now, we have four standalone ordinances, and they are the dangerous dog, the canine control, the nuisance ordinance, and the animal neglect and cruelty. So if you go to our website and you're trying to find out particular ordinance that we have regarding animals, you're clicking all over the place. And I think that it's frustrating for citizens. It's kind of like when you call and you get automated voicemail systems, and you have to press one and then press two and et cetera. So I think it'll be easier for the citizens to find the answers they're looking for if we have one ordinance. Also, it standardizes the timeframes and penalties, and it refines the wording. So everything is just a lot more together. All the time to pay if you receive a citation is the same, so instead of one ordinance, you have three days to pay, and another ordinance, you have thirty days to pay. Everything is streamlined, so it will be standardized. There's only pretty much two major changes to this ordinance, the nuisance section, dangerous dogs, and we add two new sections. It deletes the nuisance section altogether. The current ordinance is hard to enforce. All we can really do is do civil penalties, which is monetary. And a lot of time, that is not enough to get the owner of that animal to change the behavior that's causing the nuisance. You tell them you're going to issue them a fine, and they just, eh, no big deal. So we're not really changing the behavior and what, you know, needs to be done. So we feel like the nuisance behaviors can be handled under other ordinances such as the canine control ordinance. Also, on the dangerous dog, it removes a designation for potentially dangerous dogs since the restrictions and the penalties are the same. Whether a dog is declared potentially dangerous or dangerous, everything that we ask those dog owners to do is the same, so we thought it would be simpler just to remove that category and have two classifications, dangerous dog and a vicious dog. So the two new additions are, one, a large commercial breeder ordinance and exotic and dangerous animals. On the large commercial breeder, a large commercial breeder under this ordinance would be defined as any person, persons, partnership, or corporation that owns, has custody of, or maintains ten or more female dogs or ten or more female cats for the purposes of breeding to sell the offspring to sell or trade. This ordinance would set standards of care for animals. For example, the state law dictates how we have to care for animals at the shelter. It would also, for a large commercial breeder, dictate how they have to provide standards of care for those animals. They would require a registration with the Pitt County Animal Services Department. They would complete an annual inspection and pay an annual registration fee of fifty dollars. It also would go into effect one year after passage. This would task my department with education, distributing material to any large commercial breeder, and how they can comply with the guidelines. The next part is exotic and dangerous animals. By definition, this is what we're saying any of the following exotic or wild animals belong to, the panthera genius, the venomous amphibians, the venomous reptiles, the non-venomous reptiles that weigh over fifty pounds at maturity, or wolves. And the Animal Services Advisory Board, the definition they picked for venomous is secreting venom capable of injecting venom by means of a bite or a sting. They would have to register with one year from the date the ordinance is adopted. They would provide proof of insurance with a minimum of one-hundred-thousand-dollar coverage per claim. That is consistent with the coverage that if your dog is declared as dangerous in our ordinance, and it bans the ownership of possession of dangerous exotic animals that are not registered with our department after one year. And again, the definition of venomous. The Animal Services Advisory Board did hold a public comment period at their September meeting, and we did not have anybody from the public come and attend that. So at that point, they voted and they unanimously recommended that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners adopt this ordinance. It is our belief that this further enhances our mission, which is to protect the health and public safety of all of its citizens and to provide humane care to the animals in Pitt County. So at this point, they are recommending that the commissioners consider setting a public hearing for their night meeting on November twentieth. And I'll take any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, we've all had an opportunity to look at this, and I'd like to commend your group on coming up with this and their unanimous support. So I would like to recommend that we set a public hearing for November the twentieth at six P.M.
Second. All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. So ordered.
Thank you.
Yeah, just as one after matter, in the review of your board, like these exotic animals and the others, particularly category, you mentioned a fifty-dollar fee. That wasn't even cover. You're going out there and observing one time, would it?
For the large commercial breeders?
Yes. That's a profit-making situation, isn't it?
You are correct.
And fifty dollars is all you're going to charge to give all that service?
Initially, I guess.
We kind of patterned it after Cleveland County. They did this two years ago, and it worked well for them. So we were kind of just trying to pick a starting base. But you're more than welcome to increase it.
Well, you might have wondered if we wanted to do that, but since we're going to have a public hearing, I would prefer to hear from the public about it, but I was wondering what your committee was. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I believe we've got a request for a closed session. If that be in the case, will the county? Ma'am?
Second.
No, wait a minute. I want the attorney, I want her to give us the approval. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, three eleven, three eighteen point one-one A three, under the attorney-client privilege exception, one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one A one, for confidential information, and also one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one A six, to discuss a personnel matter.
Now, Mary?
Mr. Chairman, we're going to close session.
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. So ordered. If everybody else that's not related to this will excuse us, we'll be back shortly.
And I'm glad I could.
Thank you. We're now back in open session. Any further business?
No, sir.
I think we need to approve the closed session minutes.
Yes, I would like to move for approval of the September 25th close session minutes.
I'll second that.
On the prayer indication, right hand.
Aye.
All right. If there's no further business, Commissioner's comments, say it.
No comments.
No comment?
No comments.
I think we should ask for prayer for this country and those people who were hurt by violence in the shooting incident. And please be mindful that we ought to respect each other as human beings in the shooting incident. And please be mindful that we ought to respect each other as human beings and love each other as Christians throughout.
Very good point. Tom? Mr. Gass, you still there?
I am still here and I have no comment. Great meeting.
Thank you, Jamie. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second. Is our second?
Second it.
All right. All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
So ordered. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Mark.